Hi, everybody who's on right now. I just want you to know we have the live YouTube streaming, but I don't have the meeting recording yet. So just want to let everybody know. Did anybody hear that? Just need one person to jump on and say yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I heard it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
We're good.
Mary, do you have any reports for tonight?
Um, Mary Jo, I just have a legislation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we can all go back to mute for now. Everybody, we are live on YouTube and I will start the recording for the meeting. So when Andy's ready, he will jump on.
Okay. Got a minute yet?
Um, just about.
Okay. All right. Good evening. Like to call the Finance Committee meeting to order. Mary Jo, please call the roll.
Ron Van Kirk.
He is absent, excused. He may still be able to get on a meeting, but that's not a certain thing. So at this moment, he's absent, excused.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Andy Salhurt.
Here. First thing on the agenda is approval of the minutes. The minutes for February 8th were not put on board docs. We'll do that at the next meeting. We do have the minutes of the finance meeting of February 22nd to approve. Do we have any corrections additions?
Move to approve.
Second.
To approve the minutes, Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Andy Salhurt.
Yes. Uh, with notifications, we have two. One is a community recycling awareness, a grant award from the Cuyahoga County Solid Waste District. An amount of $21,500 for the city of Brooklyn for the purpose of implementing a special project. It involves cart tagging, oops tags, mailers, postage, and the staff at the somewhere to check the carts to see items within them to be approved. Thanks goes out to Councilwoman Pucci for working on this and getting the grant with it. The other one is a notification for the preventive maintenance funding program in an amount of $40,000. And that is going to be for work on resurfacing base repair, rebuild basins, manholes, and the amount of $40,000 for Ridge Road from Memphis to Flowerdale. And that comes from Cuyahoga County. Next, we have bid approval. It's going to be for the 2021 road program. Uh, we have a letter, a letter to Mayor Katie Gallagher from GPD. It goes, Dear Mayor Gallagher, on Friday, February 26, 2021, at 10:30 a.m., City of Brooklyn opened sealed bids for advertised 2021 road program. There were a total of nine bids submitted and open. The following is a summary of the bids received. The engineer's estimate is $1,023,006.75. The bids came in at RMH Concrete and Foundations at 896,71649. Libertate Construction, Siofi, bid amount of 969,25475. Construction King came in at 994,194. Seton Stone Contracting LLC bid 1,025,00105.70. Evandra Brothers Construction bid 1,088,463.11. TC Construction, Inc. bid the amount of 1,092,698. Fabrizi Trucking and Paving, Inc. bid 1,115,388.25. Terrace Construction Company, Inc. bid 1,153,811.30. And Tri-More Corp. bid an amount of 1,350,00942.01. A review of the itemized bids does not show any front-loading on balanced items. RMH Concrete and Foundations, Inc. has included all the signed documents required with the proposal as listed in the information form instructions to bidders. It is our opinion that the recommendation that RMH Concrete and Foundation, Inc. is the lowest and best bidder for the 2021 road program. And that its city should enter into their contract with RMH Concrete, Concrete and Foundations, Inc. in the amount of 896,716.49. Sincerely, Daniel J. Garrison, GPD Group. Any questions?
I move that we recommend awarding the bid to RMH Construction for 896,716.49 cents.
Second. Mary Jo, you're on mute.
Thank you very much. To approve the bid, Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Andy Salhurt.
Yes. In old legislation, we have Resolution 2021-5. It's under third reading and adoption. For uh, Resolution 2021-7, it's second reading and administrations requesting a suspension and adoption. It's authorizing community cost sharing, agreeing by in between the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District and the City of Brooklyn. And the amount of that was $5,000. Any questions on that? We're good.
I, I just have a question. Are we on, did you say Resolution 5?
I went, I read five, but we're on seven.
Got it. Okay, okay.
Sorry.
Move to recommend, um, we adopt by emergency measure.
Second.
To recommend council adopt by emergency, Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Andy Salhurt.
Yes.
And if we can go back to five, I'll move to recommend adoption.
Second.
To recommend to adopt Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Andy Salhurt.
Yes. Then we're on to ordinance 2021-7. It's third reading and adoption. Repealing section 13505 of the Brooklyn Codified Ordinances, petty cash funds. Questions, comments?
Move to recommend adoption.
Second.
To recommend council adopt Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Andy Salhurt.
Yes. Next, we have ordinance 2021-8. It's only on second reading, admitting section 135.03, adoption of the investment policy of the codified ordinance to the city of Brooklyn. Then we have ordinance 2021-10. It's only on second reading. Ordinance providing for issuance and sale of not to exceed 751,000 of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay costs of reconstructing, renovating, rehabilitating, and other rising and otherwise improving the roof or portions thereof of the city's recreation center as designated plans approved or to be approved by council. Good. Then we're on to ordinance 2021-11. It is on second reading. An ordinance providing for issuance and sale of not to exceed 1,680,000 dollars of notes in anticipation issuance of bonds to pay costs of extending American road by constructing, grading, draining, paving, instructing curbs, gutters, and driveway aprons, installing storm sewers, and making other improvements as designated plans approved to be approved by council and declaring an emergency. And then the last of old business, we have ordinance 2021-12. It is under second reading. An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed 560,000 of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay costs of reconstructing Rodo and Road and Rodo and Alley and declaring an emergency. Going into new legislation, we have Resolution 2021-8. It is on first reading, administrations requesting suspension and adoption. It's authorizing the mayor to, of the city of Brooklyn to enter in a contract with the Northern Ohio Patrolman, Patrolman's Benevolent Association Jailers Unit for a three-year contract beginning January 1st, 2021.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Butler.
Thanks for bringing this item to the committee's attention. I just wanted to offer my comments if you had or responses to any questions, if you had any on this particular agreement. I did send information about our, our efforts with protect, with respect to this particular union. And, and I think maybe those have answered your questions, but if not, I'm happy to do so tonight. I will just express my gratitude for the union, for their efforts to negotiate fairly with us. And I'll say, generally speaking, for the benefit of this committee and council and members of the public, that this contract would hew very closely to the overarching goals of the city administration in our contract negotiations beginning last year and also, um, you know, would represent a continuation of the pattern of bargaining that we've been able to establish with respect to all the unions this year. Thanks.
Thank you. Kathy?
May I be recognized?
Go ahead, please.
Um, first, thank you, Mr. Butler, again, for negotiating this and also for providing the detail on what the changes are. I appreciate having that information up front. I just have a couple, just really general questions. The first is, how many members do we actually have in this group? And also, do we have an active labor management committee with this group?
Those are great questions. I believe right now we're at three members of the corrections unit. So this represents our smallest, uh, union in the city. We do have active negotiations. One representative from that union joined his colleagues in OPBA when we negotiated over the police and police supervisors' contract beginning last year. So, and that was Mike Bellina. He was the representative who represented the corrections unit. That is why it's really fair to say that the changes in this particular contract from the existing contract follow very closely the changes that we made to the police contract that you ratified earlier. Mr. Bellina was part of those negotiations and participated pretty actively throughout the process.
Thank you. Um, do, do we have an active though labor management, like where we just sit down and discuss maybe some issues that come up regularly or?
I have not been a part of those, Councilwoman. Maybe the chief could answer that. I think he's on the line, but I, I have not myself been part of that. I do believe he keeps an open line of communication, but I'll let the chief speak to that. If he's inclined, if he's around and inclined to do so. I can tell you, Councilwoman, that from my perspective, I don't hear of grievances coming out of that particular unit. Uh, and that to me is always a pretty positive sign that labor and management are consistently communicating with one another.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Butler.
You're welcome.
All right. Like to make a motion to suspend the rules and adopt.
Second.
To recommend that council suspend the rules and adopt Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Andy Salhurt.
Yes. Next, we have Resolution 2021-9. It is on first reading. Talking with the administration today, they'd like to have it put in request suspension and also adopt is establishing the full-time position of housing manager with the city of Brooklyn from section two from the resolution. Full-time position of housing manager under the direction of Economic Development Director, City Planner, and working in conjunction with the Building Commissioner shall be created and designated by the mayor of the city of Brooklyn to be compensated at the rate of not less than 40,000 annually nor more than 55,000 annually to be paid bi-weekly. Drafted inscription of housing managers duties is attached. Mayor, would you like to want to add anything to this or?
No, I, I sent out an email a few weeks back after Marty Bear had left here. Uh, this is a position that we're going to have to fill hopefully pretty soon. We're coming into spring weather and summer. You know, the ability to expand and capitalize on some of the recommendations as outlined in the master plan. I think that it's timely. Uh, this is something that we've looked at uh, for a little bit, and I think that the timing with the right person to expand this role in certain housing aspects, but also doing what we have done best in, um, explore the property maintenance and stand top of properties. I think this would be helpful for the city overall.
All right.
This would still have to go through the civil, civil service process.
All right. Thank you.
May I be recognized?
Yes, go ahead.
And I, I apologize, Mayor. Um, I just, I'm bringing up my email because I did send something, um, last Monday after the council meeting. However, I inadvertently, because our names are so similar, I see that it came to me instead of you when I started typing the K A T. So I apologize. I just had a couple general questions because I am supportive of the position and the idea. Um, what is the, and maybe this is for Mr. Ragus, the estimated total annual cost, including salary rollups and benefits? And then, um, part of the, part of my next question is already answered because in Maple Heights, the housing manager is really in effect the assistant um, in their building department. So I was not aware that this would have come under economic development. So my question was, how is that all going to work? Um, so, like, what percentage, like, he'll be our only actual inspector, right, for residential?
Yes. I mean, last year, Don and Jim had helped with grass violations because Marty was out for some of the year. So, I mean, in this type of city environment, it's really all hands on deck and to cover wherever we can cover. But yes, this person would be solely responsible for residential, uh, crossing over to commercial property as well on inspections. And then also rental inspections interior as well as looking at the housing components. So there's plenty of work to do. Um, but Jim will always pick up the slack and vice versa where it's necessary. Obviously, Jim and Dave have specialized experience and certifications. So this person can't go beyond those certifications, but they all help out where necessary. Tom Ragus can't, could not make it tonight. I did outline the costs for Marty Bear for the last few years. Then you have the salary in there. So the swing of that was between 15 and $20,000. As for roll-up costs, it all depends on if that person's, what they designate as healthcare or if they don't designate as healthcare at all. For instance, my salary is my salary. I don't take healthcare. So that's all it is. So we can't estimate the roll-up costs. But right now, uh, the healthcare for a family would be about $18,000 to give you that estimate.
Okay.
And then, um, you know, we have explored internally between Dave, Jeremy, and Tom and myself about restructuring, uh, what economic development and building department looks like as a whole. The timing is just not there to look at that, but having Jeremy be overseeing everybody is something that we'll explore and see how this works. If it doesn't work the way that we've described, we can always change it. But Dave will always oversee the inspection part of it and Jeremy really on the housing component and looking at broader picture of how do we take our housing stock and some of those issues that were outlined in the master plan and kind of change the way we're doing business and looking into the future.
Okay. And then I just have a brief question for Mr. Butler, and that is, um, I just get confused with the whole exempt and non-exempt and how overtime plays in. If you could just explain, I, I know that this is a non-exempt position. And then in the ordinance, it, it of course says no overtime. Could you just explain like how that works?
Uh, the distinction typically involves discretion of the employee to perform certain functions, including supervisory functions. And so if an employee is considered an exempt employee, we believe that the job description matches that of an exempt employee under the Fair Labor Standards Act. Then that employee is not entitled to overtime compensation, notwithstanding whatever our ordinances would say about comp time, for example. That employee would not be entitled to overtime, hourly overtime compensation for his or her work. Uh, to the extent that that salaried work would be, would go beyond 40 hours in a work week. Um, so that's the distinction. Yeah.
This is a non-exempt employee that will not be getting overtime?
No, I believe it would be an exempt employee. I thought, I thought that's how the legislation was written. That it would be an exempt employee who would not be entitled to overtime. That is to say exempt from the overtime requirements under the Fair Labor Standards Act.
Okay, thank you. And that's why I was confused because it does say non-exempt under the F S, FLSA status.
Is that in the job description, Councilwoman?
Yes.
I think that would have to be amended. Uh, that should be amended.
Okay, thank you. That's why I was confused.
Thanks.
Motion to introduce and suspend the rules.
Um, second, um, with the amendment that this position is an exempt under Fair Labor Standard Act status.
All right, second.
To recommend that council adopt as amended for the exemption status, Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Andy Salhurt.
Yes.
And the chief is on now to answer a question that Kathy had.
Oh, hi, chief.
I did hear your question.
Okay.
I did hear your question, um, regarding the labor management means. Because we're so small, I see Mike and the, and the jailers multiple times throughout the week. Any issues that come up, they're addressed right away. Uh, we don't have any kind of formal once a year sit downs. It's, it's a constant ongoing communication from all three of them in the bargaining unit.
Okay, good to hear. Thank you, chief.
No problem.
All righty, on to Resolution 2021-10. It's on first reading administrations requesting suspension and adoption. Establishing fees for advertising at the John M. Recreation Center. And it involves a fee range for advertising approved banners for the ring sizes of 200 to 1,000, 400 to 2,000, pool size, 100 to 500, baseball, baseball field sizes, 125 to 600. The Zamboni wrap from 1,000 to 5,000, center ice is 4,000 to 10,000. Uh, the range for the dasher boards are 600 to 1,500, and small on ice logos are anywhere from 1,000 to 5,000. Any questions?
Move to recommend adoption by emergency.
Second.
To recommend to council to adopt by emergency, Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Andy Salhurt.
Yes. Then we have Resolution 2021-11. It's on first reading and also administrations requesting suspension and adoption. It's for the rehabilitation of Memphis Avenue at the intersection with Tidham and then the city of Brooklyn. Uh, it's, the county is going to contribute up 50% of project up to $210,000. Any comments or questions?
Move to recommend adoption by emergency.
Second.
To recommend council adopt by emergency, Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Andy Salhurt.
Yes. And then what last item we have a new business ordinance 2021-13. It is only on first reading. It's enacting section 135.031, adoption of the debt policy of the codified ordinances of the city of Brooklyn. Mayor, do you have anything else for the Finance Committee?
Sorry, Kevin Butler just called me. Um, no, I do not.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
To adjourn, Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Andy Salhurt.
Yes.
Are you ready for the committee of the whole?
Let's go. Let's do it. Mary Jo, can you call the roll, please?
Andy Salhurt.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Mary Belvair.
Here.
Kevin Tamski.
Here.
Sue Groddick.
Here.
Ron Van Kirk. Ron Van Kirk is absent and excused. Meg Ryan Shaki.
Here.
With this meeting, talking with the mayor, we have also Bowen on our screens today with us. Probably like to try to get them started with it. So we've covered most of the items already. Mayor, it's all yours.
Can we, can we adopt, can we approve our minutes from February twenty second real quick?
I'm sorry. Minutes of February twenty second, committee as a whole.
Move to approve.
Second.
To approve Andy Sellhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Belvair.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Groddick.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you, everybody. From Bowen here today, we have Robin, Alan and Kyle. They're going to review the schematic design. We also have on the line our owners, Rob, Jason, Noldy from G P D, as well as Chris Montgomery from Panzika. So we've been working hand in hand with everybody. And so far, we've come up with a really close schematic. We're closing in on a schedule. It seems to be something we're sticking. And without further ado, I'll turn it over to them. I know they have a presentation that they'll go. And we're going to leave a little time for some questions.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm going to get started by just kind of introducing and sort of recapping where we're at in the process. Obviously, we met last month and introduced our recommendation. Panzika Construction as the construction manager. So we've, we've spent a good deal of time getting them on board and getting them introduced to the project and starting to get their feedback into it. But we thought this would be a good opportunity where we're at right now, where we could come back to council and start, you know, give you an update. As to the progress related to the, to the design concept. But before that, I just wanted to touch on the schedule. It's our intention, you know, from the beginning that we want to break ground on the project with a site work package. In early summer. In order to meet that timeframe. We are proposing that we come to council and the finance committee with an overall project budget. That we would be looking to get approved as part of a resolution. And we are, we're targeting June fourteenth currently as that date. We wanted to be sure that we are far enough along in the design that we are confident in the, in the estimate and we have a good. Placeholder in terms of where we, we feel that would fall. We would also then be requesting either a special council meeting on six twenty-one. Or a suspension of the rules limiting the reading, the resolution to two readings. And then if that resolution passes, at that point, we'd be prepared to release the early site package. And begin the. The site preparation work. I think with that, that kind of covers the highlights and I can turn it over to Robin and Kyle to, to go through the, the concept design. And Alan, I see there too. But were there any other questions on the, the overall schedule?
I would have to say that we are expecting to go three readings on the first one. If we could go two, that would be nice. But three readings would require one special meeting to stay on that schedule.
May I be recognized? I do think it's important to go three readings. This is a lot of money and like a. Once in a generation project that we're doing, and I believe it's important that residents have as much time as possible. So if it requires a special meeting, that's okay. But are you saying that? For our, you, we can't do it in our final meeting in June? Our, our second regular meeting in June and that you want one in between? Is that what you're proposing?
The schedule would be first reading on the fourteenth, second reading on the twenty-first, final reading on the twenty-eighth.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions, then. Robin, Kyle and Alan, if you'd like to take it over.
All right, I'm going to be sharing my screen. All right, so to kind of give you an orientation of where we're at, we're at the corner of Memphis between North Amber and Brookway. Our site is right here on the rec center side. And as we started planning this building, we're very, also very cognizant of the future development on the other side. So we see this as the start of a great civic center for the city of Brooklyn, moving forward with the first major piece being the new city hall and police station. So moving into our site itself and the way that we are thinking about the development of this site. Up on the corner here at Memphis, along Brookway, we have placed the city hall and police station with the bulk of the city hall. Becoming this great facade and this great feature up along Memphis. Maintaining the same entry, someone coming in, there's a new public lot for the rec center itself. And then reorganizing the drop off lane to the rec center to create a safer environment for dropping off people and picking them up. And then having the ability to park the car. Over on the city hall side, again, we're proposing the same type of drop off area with smaller parking up, up front. With a nice public plaza in front of city hall and the new building itself. We'll be reorganizing some public parking along the rec center that could be shared by both functions with an auxiliary lot in the back. Of the project itself. Up along Memphis, there'll be a new curb cut. This will be a secure entry and exit point for the police station itself. And then we've got a secure boundary within the site for police vehicles, access to the garage, to the Sally Port and other functions for the police itself. And then we've got some stormwater retention in the back of the site. So moving into the building to orient you guys, Memphis is on this side over here. Brookway is down here and then North Amber and the rec center are over in this corner. So I want to focus on the first floor here, entering into the building. This would be the main entry into the city hall. And into the council chambers, the clerk of court, we've got a community room off here. So brief kind of walk through through the building, entering into city hall, the idea of we have a reception desk up front. Which would then give you access to the community room, to the clerk of court and the clerk's office over here. Down this small corridor over here, we've got the building department. And then they would have access to their vehicles directly outside to this small lot. These small parking spaces just off of Memphis back here. This main lobby, which is kind of organizing feature of the entire building, both on the exterior and for the interior. Also leads to the police lobby for the police station itself. So the police station has a small lobby. The two of them are connected, but they both have their own entrance and identity within the building. This section is the admin to the police, their garage, the jail is back here, animal control is up here. And then a possible firing range on the backside of the site. Moving to the upper floor, again, we've got this great two-story lobby letting a lot of light become that feature architectural. Element of the building. On this side, we have the offices for the mayor, for the council, for the clerk and for the finance department. And then some shared spaces, a meeting room, break room, restrooms and high density storage. Along with the locker and fitness area for the police. So going a little bit more detailed into, to the plan itself, we've got this vestibule. As soon as someone walks in, they're met with the reception desk in this great kind of public hall, public lobby space. Off this lobby is the community room. This is a multi-function, multi-purpose room that can be used both by the police, by the community. Just a really flexible space and a real benefit to the community itself. Again, off the main lobby is our, our council chambers, our court. Which has a direct connection with the court clerk office and various functions within that. There will be a monumental stair that'll get the public to be able to access the upper levels along with an elevator. Back here is the executive session room. It has a connection directly into the courtroom itself. And from this corridor down here for anyone coming downstairs, comes directly downstairs from the city hall offices. And they can get access to the executive session room and then into the court itself. Building department is off to the side over here. Again, someone could walk in. You know, they could drop off drawings, there's a small little waiting area, but the buildings inspectors themselves would then have direct access to the exterior. To be quickly to be able to get to and from their cars, you know, control the kind of dirt coming in and out. Of the, of the city hall itself. And then there's a back corridor connecting all of this. Up on the upper level, so coming up either by the elevator or the monumental stair, the stair in the back is the actual offices for the city hall. Walking in to get a small reception waiting area, which is, has a small work area and coffee station off to the side. Going up toward. The mayor's office, we have the mayor's assistant and mayor's office and their suite with a meeting room up in the corner. Down here, we have all the offices for the city hall itself, starting with the economic developer, the law director. Count's payable, count's receivable payroll, and then the finance director on the other side. Council has its own breakout spaces, touchdown stations, a small meeting area, a place to go to forum meetings. Before you go down to the executive session room and into council. And that has a direct connection to the court clerk's office itself. Across the hall, again, we've got another meeting room. Again, this can be used by anyone in the department. A small break room, restrooms and then high density storage, along with a small server room and mothers room.
May I ask a quick question? Do you mean council clerk, not court clerk?
Yes, council clerk.
Okay, thank you.
So can I give you an idea of what the, the massing of the building is going to, is going to be like and kind of the shape? And the size relative to the rec center itself. So again, this is Memphis right here, this is North Amber, and then Brookway is back here. This is the existing rec center, this is the existing entry into the rec center with the new rec center parking field in front. And the new drop off area over here. Moving over to this side, again, this great plaza and this great facade, you know, we feel this is going to be a great architectural feature. Really a welcoming view, a welcoming presence along Memphis itself. Again, the drop off lane, a small lot up front, and then this is all public parking here. With the private parking, secure parking for the police station in the back. Little bit closer up here, again, we see this great plaza up front, you know, as we develop plans, we'll develop landscaping. And you know, the plaza design itself with a large, you know, very open, very welcoming facade. Welcoming people into the city hall itself. Again, the dual entry of the city hall entry and the police entry, and you can see the drop off area up front. Kind of an eye level view, what it'd be like, you know, approaching city hall. As you're walking, you know, along the path or you're coming up in the car, again, that, that main feature, really want to create an opening, welcoming building. That's really going to set the standard for the city campus moving forward. This is a view from the corner, if you're standing at the rec center. We want to establish a pedestrian connection between the two buildings on both sides of this drive aisle. So this would be kind of walking down from the entrance to the rec center, from the rec center to city hall itself. And then this is a little further back in the public lot. Again, you can see the start of this secure area, which would house the police parking. And then this is the pool of the rec center over here, and then this is looking toward Memphis. And then along the back, along this new curb cut, the small parking for animal control and for the building department. To have quick access to their respective departments. The secure area back here, obviously want to maintain a lot of screening from the neighbors on the backside. Through vegetation and this privacy fence. This would be the Sally Court for the jail on the backside. And again, you know, incorporating the bubble path, the bike path and the public greenway along Memphis.
May I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
So this new curb cuts, will the police be going in and out? Where there's not a light, a traffic light?
Yes, this is meant for two-way traffic in and out.
But, but there won't be a traffic light where the police actually go in and out? Of the, of the facility?
Not at this time.
Yeah, not at this time.
We can, we can discuss that with the city engineer.
And the traffic control. Yeah. Right.
Thank you.
Councilman Tansky, you have a quick question?
Go ahead.
In the back of the, directly in the back of the rec center, off to the left in the back of the city hall, you have a parking lot. I would imagine that's where one of our diamonds are, correct?
Yes.
Okay, now in back of the rec center, there was another ball diamond. Maybe I misunderstood you. What is going back there?
You're talking about this space back here?
Correct.
It's, it's undeveloped right now. It's meant for future development.
At this point, you know, if it's untouched, it'll remain a field. And then we're discussing our options about the future of the recreation center. This is why I've asked a special meeting at the end of the month. You know, the first image that they show are buildings across the street. None of that's determined yet. We have to decide what's next as far as if we are going to move forward with the library partnership. Or what are we going to do about recreation? Are we renovating? Are we expanding? Are we building new? All these things we have to discuss comes down to. Money comes down to what our priorities are. So this is what we'd like to explore a little bit more. So at this particular time, what they're showing is the ability to save. The playground and one of the fields.
So right now, two diamonds back to the one on the left will be stormwater retention and parking lot. The one directly behind the rec center will be untouched until further. Notice or further plans.
Correct.
Okay.
Kyle, did you have any more?
No, that was, that was the presentation.
So this is purely schematic. The next phase that we'll move into, after this is honed in just a little bit more is the, the design development. What it looks like from the outside. Those type of elements, the look more so, you know, I'd say the exciting part. So, but just from a high level view of what the spacing is on the site. And the layout that you've seen, is there any particular comments? We could send this out via email and if you have any feedback.
A quick question, Mayor. Parking for the rec center when we have these massive games. They will be allowed to park in the front. And in the back where that other ball diamond is going to be removed, correct? Are those are the two spots? And I would believe also will maintain the parking on the right-hand side of the rec too. So there'll be three areas where they'll be able to park, correct?
Correct. I don't think we'll ever get enough parking for a St. Ignatius and Ed's game. We could fill the entire thing up and there won't be enough parking. But yes, all of those spots will be available to the rec center at all times.
Okay.
I would appreciate it, like you said, Mayor, if they could send it out so we could study it a little closer.
Okay. Well, appreciate that. I know community engagement was an aspect that we talked about. As of right now, and Jason, you can correct me, I don't have the schedule. We're looking, coming back to council for schematic design conversation in, what, what date?
Well, we would. When we present the council, when we present the project budget. You're referencing?
Yes.
Six fourteen.
And then we have a date scheduled to have a meeting with just the residents on Brookway.
Yeah, two days thereafter, six sixteen.
So you're saying we're not going to get any additional information until two weeks before we're expected to pass it?
We can, we will come, become. We can cer- we'll come, be coming back with, uh, additional images, but in terms of actually priced, pricing, um, we want to again have this further along before we, um, present that for approval, but, um, the, some of the additional images that the mayor had indicated and renderings would, uh, would be forthcoming.
I've got a question, would it be possible to get the residents a little bit more upfront involved with this, instead of like two days after the first meeting, but maybe a week or two before the first meeting? Just to kind of expect the unexpected or whatever?
I, I agree, I, I think we need to have those residents on Brookway in the loop prior to us voting on it so that they actually have an opportunity, um, to provide some feedback and get their questions addressed.
If we could talk about this, uh, tomorrow at our Tuesday meeting and see if what we could do about moving around the schedule a bit.
It'd be appreciated, I don't know how, how long or how tight the timeline is, but maybe if we can build in a little extra wiggle room, it might help.
I'd say, you know, you know, we, we, we're talking high level with the residents on Brookway, I think their concerns and their certainly are gonna be valid, or, you know, what, what is it like to have a police car going off next to me, what is it like to have animal control over there, if the firing ring gets built, am I gonna hear that? All valid concerns, so, um, it would definitely be higher level. When we talk about going into schematic design, obviously, you know, we value your opinion, but when you go down to the nitty gritty of day-to-day operations, I didn't even get involved too much with, um, the layout for the police station because they know how they function best.
True.
And, um, so that's an area where, um, you know, we don't want to see too many changes or comments because you, you're gonna know the design of the internal workings of all, every day from the employees. Um, but the outside, what it looks like, the feel, definitely.
Right.
Sorry, sorry Sue, go ahead.
That's okay, I, I was just wondering if, um, maybe closer to June, we could put together we being not me, a presentation, just like you said, showing the outside and, and the schematic and what it's going to look like in our community, um, and, and possibly just put it on our website, just for people to click through. Um, maybe not open for input, not really asking for input, although some may offer it, but just to build up a sense of excitement, because it, it's pretty exciting looking at these images. And I don't mean the inside community room and where the mother's room is and the bathrooms, but just the outside schematics are pretty exciting. And I imagine as we get closer and it really becomes real, it's, it'll be even more, but just the, the ability to click through it on our website, I think would be awesome.
I do have a question too, um, what is the width of the buffer based on the, the current schematic? The buffer between the residents on Brookway?
Yeah, it's around twenty feet.
Which is our current code. Uh, speaking of, um, you know, keeping residents in the loop on this project, um, if I could share my screen. Let me figure it out. Um, if you're going to board docs recently, you could, you could see that. Can everybody see that? Uh, you go to board docs, you know, one of the goals that we set with, uh, advancing this is following the police station in city hall, so, um, you could click on that and you could see all the legislation that city council has passed or meeting minutes that were related to, uh, this particular item from the beginning until now, uh, this is all publicly accessible, this is where we can attach documents, so back in November, we, we put something in our newsletter about the city engaging it, um, an architect and a, um, owner's rep, and then this upcoming newsletter, we weren't ready to put plans in there, but we gave a little history of, I don't think this hit the mail yet, but we have a little history of the city hall's past, uh, trying to get residents engaged and, you know, what our past looked like, where we're gonna be going into the future. And then, um, I've advised Bowen, I'd like for the next one to be able to print something in the printed newsletter with that, and, and this is definitely a place where, as Sue mentioned, we could direct people to go um, to stay up to date on what's going on, uh, is related to the city hall and police station build. So, I think that's a, a deep feature and, uh, would encourage people to direct um, anybody who has any questions there, and if there's something missing, uh, that you would find valuable that we, we might have missed, um, certainly, let me know.
Any questions from anybody else?
I gotta figure out how to unshare. There should be a stop screen share somewhere towards the bottom. Yeah. Maybe I'll marry Joe come, but you guys can move on.
All right. Thank you for the people from GPD and Bowen for giving the presentation, does anybody else have any questions to them while they're still here?
No, I don't, but we'll be getting the presentation emailed to us, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, thank you to all them for helping explain the situation to us and keep moving forward. Uh, going through the committee of, as a whole, for the rest of the agenda, we covered everything pretty much in the finance meeting, all the items. And everybody I know was, I had the finance meeting. We did cover notifications, the bid approval, we went through all the old business, new business. Um, mayor, do you have anything that you'd like to talk about yet?
I would just, uh, advise everyone that the new website was up and running as of two o'clock today, so go check it out. Um, and then if the committee as a whole had any particular questions about the housing manager position uh, that weren't answered in finance. And then, um, you know, please mark your calendar for March twenty ninth, as I already stated. We're gonna have to ta- discuss next steps on what a city center looks like, um, you know, whether there's a relationship there with the library or what's gonna be next with the rec center. Um, I know Councilman Tansky said this early on, we're gonna have this really nice building and an old rec center next door. Um, we're cognizant of that and we'd like to start planning on, you know, where do we see our future going in that area and, um, taking a look at where we are, our finances, membership, uses, and then what are the possibilities and those costs and, um, what that looks like. So, March twenty ninth at six o'clock, we'll have a work session.
Anything else from anybody else? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. To adjourn, Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bell Beer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Groddick?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Chackey?
Yes.
All right, see everybody back at seven o'clock.
The meeting is back on live, so as people come on, it is recording. Thank you.
Got everybody on board. And it is 7:00 PM. Mary Jo, I'd like to call this meeting of the Brooklyn City Council to order. Can you do the roll call, please?
Andy Selhertz.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Mary Bell Beer.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Sue Groddick.
Here.
Ron Van Kirk.
He is absent, excused. He may still be able to get into the meeting, but probably not.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yeah.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. And after that, we were supposed to have an opening by Councilman Ron Van Kirk, and I'll take his place in that.
A pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today is March 8th. It's International Women's Day. So we should all kind of reflect a little bit with the women in our lives, be that mothers, daughters, grandmothers. So just like to have a moment of silence, just people go reflect about all the good things and memories and maybe things to come yet in the future. So moment of silence, please. Thank you. First thing we'll have is approval of the minutes of the council meeting of February 22nd, 2021. Do I have any corrections, adjustments? Go ahead, please.
Just something minor on page four, under the mayor's remarks, seventh line, just a misspelling of Tracy Strobel's name. It should be S.T.R.O.B.E.L. And then about three lines down, I just think it's worth clarifying where it says a strategic plan at the county branch. It's a strategic plan for the entire library system.
Okay.
I make that move to approve with those two small changes.
Second.
To approve the minutes as amended, Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci. Mary Bell Beer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Groddick.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yeah.
At this time, we'll have the public session, since this is being done remotely. Mary Jo, do we have anyone that has submitted any email questions or comments to be read at the meeting?
I didn't receive anything.
All right. Thank you. Next, we'll go on to reports of committees, commissions, and boards. The first is a report of the Finance Committee. The committee met at 6:00 PM this evening. The committee actually went through a number of items, the first being notifications where we received, we were notified that we received a grant in the amount of $21,500 for the city of Brooklyn for the purpose of implementing an approved grant for special tagging, a car tagging program, as UPS tags, mailers, and postage to cover the mailers, and staff to check on the carts, in regards to recycling program. Thank you to Councilwoman Pucci for working on this and getting, helping us get at the grant. The second is a notification for the preventive maintenance funding of $40,000 from the Cuyahoga County, and that is for work to be done for resurfacing base repair, rebuild basins, manholes, in an amount of $40,000. It covers Ridge Road from Memphis. It covers Ridge Road from Memphis to Flowerdale. The next thing we had was a bid approval, where we went through and had letters sent in by GPD. And we approved at the Finance Committee, it was from the letter from GPD, is there a comment, is, is our opinion and recommendation to an RMH Concrete and Foundations is lowest and best bidder for a 2021 road program that the city should enter into the contract, RMH Contract and Foundations, in an amount of $896,716.49. The bids were opened on February 26th, 2021. The low bid was from RMH, the high bid was from Trimore at $1,350,000. And the engineer's estimate was $1,023,675. Finance, we covered also Resolution 2021-5, adopting the city of Brooklyn petty cash funds and change Tills policy. That was on third reading and for adoption, it was recommended to be adopted. We had Resolution 2021-7, it was under second reading and requesting suspension and adoption. It's authorizing a community cost share agreement in between, by and between Northeast Ohio Regional Sur District and the city of Brooklyn. That was an amount of $5,000. We have Ordinance 2021-7 repealing Section 135.05 of Brooklyn Codified Ordinances, petty cash funds. Mr. Regus covered that in the last two meetings as a housekeeping item. We also have Ordinance 2021-8 that's on second reading regarding amending the section 135.03, adoption of the investment policy of the codified ordinances of the city of Brooklyn. We covered Ordinance 12021-10. It was on second reading. Ordinance providing for issuance and sale of notes not to exceed 751,000 notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay costs of reconstructing, renovating, rehabilitating, and otherwise improving the roof or portions thereof of the city's recreation center as designated in a plan approved or to be approved by council. Next ordinance was 2021-11, second reading, ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed 1,680,000 of notes in anticipation of issuance of bonds to pay costs of extending American Road by constructing, grading, draining, paving, constructing, curbs, gutters, and driveway aprons, installing storm sewers, and making other improvements as designated in a plan approved or to be approved by council and declaring an emergency. And the last thing we covered in finance, the last is old legislation, old businesses, Ordinance 2021-12. That was on second reading, and it was an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale not to exceed 560,000 of notes. That's the gradual payback or paydown in anticipation of issuance of bonds to pay for costs of reconstructing Rhode Island Road and Rhode Island Alley and declaring an emergency. In finance, we also cover new business. Business was Resolution 2021-8, first reading and requesting suspension and adoption, and it was approved by Finance. Recommended to move forward is authorizing to Mayor of the city of Brooklyn, Ohio to enter into a contract with the Northern Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association Jailers Unit for a three-year term beginning January 1st, 2021. That was approved by the Finance Committee and moved forward to the committee as a whole and to council. Resolution 2021-9 is just on first reading, but it was also recommended or requested by administration for suspension to move for adoption. It's establishing a full-time position of a housing manager with the city of Brooklyn, Ohio. This is a position that will work with the building department and also an economic development department. The cost of the salary is a minimum of $40,000 annually with a maximum of $55,000 annually. Resolution 2021-10 was first reading, request suspension and adoption, establishing fees for advertising at the Janam Recreation Coin Center. There was a request by suspension and adoption. It was so approved. Last, second last thing is Resolution 2021-11, first reading, request suspension and adoption was for cost sharing of the rehabilitation of Memphis Avenue at the intersection with Teterman Road and the city of Brooklyn. The county will pay up 50% of the cost up to $210,000. And the last item discussed was Ordinance 2021-13. It's only at first reading, enacting Section 135.031, adoption of the debt policy of the codified ordinance, the city of Brooklyn. The committee of the whole met at, right after the Finance Committee met, we had a presentation by GPD and Bowen on new police station in City Hall. They will be, they will be providing us, emailing us drawings of their presentation. It'll be available on board docs, and also we'll try to have it available in some other public format as much as possible. The committee of the whole also discussed, we already discussed what Finance did, so that was just a repetition of items. Next item we have is report from the Recreation Board, and it's Councilman Tansky.
Thank you, Mr. Selhertz. Brooklyn youth baseball and softball. Eight U coach pitched baseball and softball, age of six to eight, as of May 1st, 2021. Registration March 15th through April 15th. Residents $55, non-residents $65. Practices begin in May, and games will be played in June. Teams will travel to North Olmsted and Fairview Park for games. 10U, 12U, 14U, 18U baseball leagues. 10U, 12U, 15U, 18U softball leagues. Age as of August 1st, 2021. Registration March 15th through April 4th. Residents $70, non-residents $80. Practices being late April and games begin in May. Teams will travel to Strongsville, Brook Park, North Olmsted, Olmsted Falls, Middleburg, Fairview Park for games. Please visit www.brooklynrec.com for complete details. The next Recreation Board meeting will be held on Monday, March 15th, in the Rec Center meeting room at 7:00 PM. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the Domestic Abuse Commission, and they'll be speaking will be Councilwoman Ryan Shaki.
Thank you. March 7th through the 13th is No More Week. This week is recognized to raise awareness to and say no more to domestic violence and sexual assault. The goal this year is to inspire everyone to make change, to help create a culture of safety, equality, and respect in our communities. You can visit nomore.org to learn more about this week-long movement and how you can get involved. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Next, we'll have a legislative update, and it'll be given by Councilwoman Mary Bell Beer.
Thank you, Mr. Selhertz. New anti-hazing legislation could be introduced in the Ohio Senate this week, following the hazing death of a Bowling Green student last Friday. The legislature introduced House Bill 310 last year. It passed the House, but has languished in the Senate. It's called Collins Law, named after an Ohio University student who died in November 2018 during a fraternity hazing. New emphasis is now expected to be given to passing and enforcing this law since the death of Steve Foltz, a 20-year-old student at Bowling Green State University, who died after an alleged hazing incident at a campus fraternity. He was an off, he was at an off-campus event organized by the fraternity where he was given, quote, "a copious amount of alcohol." The recent hazing-related deaths should bring the impetus to get the bill passed. It calls for increased criminal penalties for hazing, which in Ohio now is a fourth-degree misdemeanor. The new law contemplates that if hazing involves drugs or alcohol, hazing is a third-degree felony which could carry us, which could carry a serious jail time. Experts say that making hazing a felony could help save lives. It is an important step toward addressing the problem and gives law enforcement something to hold over the heads of hazers who ignore basic human decency and personal safety. There has been about 95 hazing deaths in the United States since 2000, and there have been thousands of others who have suffered mental and physical abuse. When this bill passes, Ohio will be the 11th state in the nation to make hazing a felony charge. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have reports of council, and tonight we'll begin with Councilwoman Pucci.
Thank you. Good evening. Hopefully, winter is over, but I did just want to give a shout out to our service department. We had several very challenging storms this past winter. It was really a challenge for them to keep up, but they really did a great job keeping up with everything under very trying conditions. So I just wanted to let them know how much we appreciate that. I'd also like to thank Mr. Coulson and Chief Milky with their assistance on a problem property. I appreciate their efforts as well. The Mr. Selhertz mentioned a grant that we received, and just a little background, I'm finishing up the very last part of the Certified Public Managers Program at Cleveland State. And one of the requirements is a capstone project. So something I was interested in addressing is the contamination in the recycling stream, because it's a very timely and important issue right now. The major source of funding for such projects, unfortunately, they are only interested in large cities. And then the next is the Ohio EPA, and because of COVID, their revenues are down, so they were not funding such projects. So I pitched my idea for this project to the Cuyahoga County Solid Waste District, and they were very receptive. So, and supportive throughout the process. They did award us the special grant of $21,500. And I would like to thank, in addition to the Cuyahoga County Solid Waste District, I'd like to thank the mayor and Mr. Regus for being supportive, and also Mr. Verba for his assistance with this, and also providing me with the statistics I needed to write the grant. Basically, the project is a direct education program to reduce the level of contamination in the curbside recycling stream. I'm not really going to discuss the specifics yet, because we need to first conduct an audit to determine what our current level of contamination is. And this has to be done prior to residents altering their recycling habits. We do have a tentative date for this in the end of April. And there will be multiple forms of communication on this, so all residents are aware of the project and why it's so important to our community. I'd just like to thank all involved for their support, and you'll be hearing a lot more about this once we get that audit completed. And I believe that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Councilwoman Mary Bell Beer.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to extend my thanks to Ms. Pucci for all her hard work in writing that grant, helping writing with that grant, with the recycling. I am one that will go into a store, and if I see something on the floor, pick it up. If I see garbage in the ground, or sometimes on the parking lot where I'm walking, I try to pick it up and throw it out. It is vital, you know, for the earth. It is vital for our society, and I think it's a wonderful thing, and I look forward to working with, I hope, you know, I hope I do recycle, right? Sometimes I don't think I do, but I do my best at doing it. So thank you, Ms. Pucci. I'd also like to thank Bowen on their presentation and GPD. What we saw this evening was just absolutely fabulous. I don't want to call it blueprints or whatever, but it just looks so exciting. It looks something to look forward to in this dismal coronavirus era that we've been in, and it's exciting. It's exciting for our city. And I'm so happy and so proud to be a part of it. It's just wonderful, and I think the administration and everybody involved. It looks like something to show off. So, once again, thank you. Now, getting back to a sore subject, the coronavirus, I did have my first shot, and everything seems okay, so far so good. I've had family members that have had it, have gotten sick on the second one. Husband had the first two, and they're okay. So I guess it's hit or miss, however, it affects somebody. I will like to extend some information. There's going to be a mass coronavirus vaccination center that's going to be opening up on March 17th at Cleveland State University, the Wallstein Center. It has the ability to vaccinate 6,000 people. That's great. The center will operate seven days a week for 12 hours a day. It will be open for eight weeks. This location is close to the, to high poverty areas, which I think is so vital, vital, that it makes it more acceptable for the vaccine rollout. This is the first mass vaccination site announced in Ohio. Wallstein Center is located on Prospect Avenue in Cleveland, downtown Cleveland. It can seat 15,000 people. It will also have parking accommodations for those getting the injection. The center will be open eight weeks. For the first three weeks, patients will receive the first dose of the Pfizer vaccine. Those interested in getting vaccinations will be able to call, make an appointment in person, or schedule through the Ohio Central Scheduling System. There will be several options for transportation, including free bus passes through the RTA, subsidized ride-share services, transportation through senior centers, and local churches, which is all wonderful. I'd also like to share a little report, something that came out, the CDC came out. CDC says fully vaccinated Americans can spend time together indoors and unmasked, according to the new Biden administration guidance. Fully immunized Americans can also visit with low-risk individuals from other households, even if they haven't yet received a vaccine. And if vaccinated individuals are exposed to COVID-19, there's no need to either quarantine or get tested for the disease, according to the new recommendations released today from the CDC. The CDC considers Americans fully vaccinated, once two weeks have passed since they received the final dose of the vaccination. Roughly 31 million Americans, or 9.2% of the population, are fully vaccinated. That's kind of a, we're on a good road to go. There's a quick reminder, Brooklyn City schools will not be in session on Wednesday, March 10th, and Thursday, March 11th, due to the school staff being vaccinated. Students will return to school on Friday, March 12th. This afternoon, I had a chance to talk with Karen at our senior center, just to see what's happening there, and it's been very difficult for many of our seniors. She mentioned that they're going to have a senior drive-by March 17th, actually St. Patty's Day, but there won't be any corned beef and cabbage on that drive-by. So seniors can make a reservation this Friday, March 12th, by calling 635-4222. You won't be getting out of the car. They're going to have raffles. They're going to have goodie bags, and the donation is by Brooklyn Point. And that pretty much completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Councilman Kevin Tansky, please. Kevin?
Sorry about that. I know I'm going to be redundant on this about these negotiations, because it's always been a big subject on my platter about the amount of money that has been saved, and how much money we have spent in the past. I just want to thank Mr. Butler on finishing up these union contracts, saving the city a good substantial amount of monies to the city on these negotiations. saving the city a good substantial amount of monies to the city on these negotiations. This was in the past very costly to the city. Again, I want to thank Mr. Butler and the mayor on taking these negotiations and saving the money on these meetings, because I remember in the past there was a lot of communication, a lot of back and forth on the monies that was being spent on outside attorneys, outside outfits. And, you know, it just, it boggles my mind, the amount of money in the past that we were going through. But again, thank you on the amount of money being saved. Thank you on negotiating these contracts and getting them agreed upon with the unions in the city. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Councilwoman Sue Groddick.
Thank you. I look forward to a day that Mrs. Bell Beer and I aren't talking about COVID- nineteen. I feel like it's coming, but I just wanted to add just a few more notes to what Mrs. Bell Beer already said. Just to remind everyone that March seventeenth was the date for the mass vaccination site at the Convocation Center. And also, today, Ohio's vaccine website is supposed to be functional. I'm saying supposed to because I didn't go look myself. And the governor also announced that, beginning this Thursday, the age has dropped to fifty. So fifty and above, certain occupations, and folks with specific medical conditions, all are eligible for the vaccines. And at six thousand people a day, that should be a good number of Cuyahoga County that's eligible, that would be able to get the vaccine. And that's all of them I'm saying about that. Mr. Seltzer's mentioned that today is International Women's Day, and I've spent a lot of time reflecting on that today. We start, we talked a little bit about it at school. And looking around us, I'm noticing the increase in public service. Just, just to summarize, Brooklyn has served in the U.S. House with Representative Marcy Kaptur, in the State House by Senator Nikki Antonio, and also Representative Bride Sweeney. We have a female governor, a female mayor for the first time with Katie Gallagher. I serve with three other councilwomen on Brooklyn. And that's awesome. It's awesome. I hope soon that we would see a governor in Ohio elected that would be a female, a senator from Ohio that would be female. But also, as we're breaking these glass ceilings with women in public service, I would love to see women in private businesses. Eight percent of the Fortune 500 CEOs are women, and only three of those women are women of color. So while we are making great strides, I think, in public service, I certainly would like to see that continue in the private, private sector also. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Councilwoman Meg Ryan Shaki.
Thank you. As Mayor Gallagher mentioned at the Committee of the Whole, the new Brooklyn website launched today. And I took some time this afternoon to go on the website and check it out myself. So there's a couple of things I wanted to bring up to residents to let them know about. First off, I do want to thank the internal staff that really worked on this process, because I know it is a lot of moving parts, and we got emails from people about, you know, what we needed to give over to them. So thank you for your work on that. With the Ready Notify subscriptions, those have reset. I know myself, I got an email letting me know about this and how to resubscribe. Great news, it is very easy. When you type in brooklynohio.gov in the URL, it brings you to the new website. You can scroll down just a little bit, and at the center of the page, there's a box that says Stay Connected. When you click on that, it takes you right to if you want text, email, both, and which subscriptions you want. Within probably under five minutes. Also playing around with the website myself, there's a few key aspects that I found very useful, and most of which I believe are new right on our website. The most important tab I found was How Do I? And when you hover over this tab, you just take your mouse and you, you don't click anything, but you go on it. There is easy access to submit the following: an autism safety roster registration, public records request, report a concern, report power outage, which I know this past winter has been huge with our residents, and very easy access to take you to where you need to go, special rubbish pickup request, and traffic or parking ticket payments. So I do encourage our residents to check out the new website. Thank you so much to our internal team and our communications team in getting this together. I think it'll be, it's got a great design, and I think it'll be very user-friendly going forward. That ends my report.
Thank you. I've got only a few comments. Brooklyn Music Boosters is excited to share that Brooklyn High School Spring Musical Freaky Friday is available to be on stream. It'll be this weekend. You can purchase a one-time code to watch the performance at home. In-person tickets are going to be restricted to either just to drama and music family only. To get the ticket, it's a cost of three dollars plus the processing fee. You can go to www.showtix, T-I-X, the number four, the letter U, dot com, forward slash events, slash slash BHS Freaky Friday twenty-twenty-one. So for roughly about the five and a half dollars, you got to see what the students have been working on for a good while, and you can support the music boosters who support the students. Speaking of the boosters, if you're still hungry after you've been watching all of us talk for a while, you've got till ten o'clock tonight to go to Raising Canes to get some food. Mentioned the music boosters, it's till ten o'clock. They can get fifteen percent of the sales that will go, proceeds to go to the boosters. The Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce will be doing their continuing development of citizens in the community by offering one post-secondary scholarship this year in an amount of one thousand dollars, and two scholarships in an amount of five hundred dollars each. Students should contact their advisors at the school or check the chamber's website for additional information. And that concludes my report. Next, we'll have the reporter, the mayor, Mayor Gallagher.
Thank you, Councilwoman Selhertz. I would like to thank Jill Ludwig, my assistant, and Jeremy Rowan, our ED Director, for working on the website. I think they did a tremendous job. This next, this upcoming Thursday, the chamber will be hosting my State of the City. And I remember last year at TRG, this was the beginning of the coronavirus. We were talking about it. At that point, we were afraid to shake hands. We probably knew we shouldn't be in the room together. And within the next week, everything just got shut down. So I didn't think that my State of the City this year would be virtual when I was shutting down last year. So as you saw, I was kind of finagling with the share screen, because I'm going to have to do this this Thursday. And I've leaned on Mary Jo Vanish, our, your clerk of court, or clerk of counsel, and Dawn Neil, our Building Department Secretary, to set up any Zoom meeting. And I'll, I'll tell you, I have just needed to click on meetings, and that's how I functioned. So, you know, again, thank you to our teachers, Sue, who have to do this every single day, because I have a hard time figuring some of this stuff out. Thanks, Meg, for going through the website, but I'm going to try this one more time, and I want to share the screen on the website. And there's a couple of things like I would like to show, because you were saying it was easy to register, and maybe it's the tenure difference between us. It took me a second. So just a couple of things that have changed from our last website. I think it's pretty seamless, but things got moved around a little. Everything's there. It's more user-friendly in this way, but just different. So I just want to make sure people can navigate it. Okay, so can everyone see that? Okay, so nice, clean screen. I think they did a tremendous job. Jill and Jeremy will be able to update this whenever necessary. This Make a Payment button, if you need to have court payment. This notify me. This is where you're going to go to register for, if you want to sign up for our alerts. And you were on the list, you have to redo this again. So you're going to type in your email address there, but you have to click on which one that you want. If you want all of them, make sure you're clicking on these different mail options. You can also do text alerts on all of these different options. We try to look for a consistent look on each department, so you'll see kind of the same layout. Nice director on the, the right. All of the contact information for those departments, kind of same main features that people are looking for. One other difference today was also the launch of the Recreation's new website. So some of these links are going other places. So you'll get to go, it'll tell you you're leaving this, the, the website, because you're actually going to the Rec Department's new website, which again, you'll have to go through the registration to get on here again. You probably, if you're like me, and are on the Rec Center's alert system, you're getting a lot of emails, because they're, they're sending these out. We're finally getting back to the normal activities. And this is a very easy system to navigate to. So hopefully, people are appreciative that we're truly trying to make it user-friendly. We heard what residents said back in the two thousand sixteen survey, and we're trying to accommodate that. The one big difference I would say from the website is when you go back to meetings and agendas, you're going to get to the Board Docs website. And typically on the old website, you saw all the council meeting agendas and all the other different commissions and boards. This is all going to be hosted on Board Docs now. So this is on the right-hand side, so you could follow any of these different commissions and boards here. This is where you'll find the minutes, the description of those boards. That used to be on the city's website, and now it's on this external site, because we can host it there. So I would say that is a good brief of that. I just, again, want to thank Jeremy and Jill for all their work on that. If you find that there's something missing, this is really a work in progress. They know how to do widgets now. We've had, talked to GIS in the county. They were offering some services, so we're exploring how to make it better and more user-friendly for residents. So again, thank you, again, to those two. And if you're interested in logging on for the State of the City, you just have to go to brooklynohiochamber.org and register. It's free. It's at noon on Thursday. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, we'll have directors' reports. And tonight, we only have one, and that is from our Building Commissioner, David Kolsar.
Evening, everyone. I want to talk a little bit about our website too, but really just specifically the building portion of it. Again, it was a fantastic job of getting it done. I've been wanting to get an update done to the website for quite some time, and was ready with, with new informational progress, kind of processes. We did a lot to simplify our permit application processes and kind of give the residents a much easier way to just go to the website, be able to see what's required. And the part that's not quite done yet, which we're still working on, is the software update. We've got a new software program for the Building Department, which will also end up going to an external site where you can actually fill out all of your permit form applications and even pay form online too. So great stuff, and I really want everybody to take a look at it. It's much easier to navigate now, and should be able to get most of your questions answered prior to calling us. But other than that, I just wanted to also extend my appreciation to Marty Byer, who was our property maintenance inspector for the past seven years. He is a fixture walking the streets and trying to help keep our neighborhoods well-kept and neat. And he will be missed around the city hall. Thank you. That completes my report.
Thank you. Next, we'll go on to notifications, and the first one is we're being notified that we received a grant from the Cuyahoga County Solid Waste District in the amount of twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars for the purpose of the recycle car tagging program. Mrs. Pucci described that. Once again, thank you to her. Hats off to her for that. The next notification we have is for Preventive Maintenance Funding Program from Cuyahoga County, an amount of forty thousand dollars. And that is for Ridge Road from Memphis to Flowerdale. It's for resurfacing base repair, rebuilding basin manholes. And the total cost for twenty-twenty-one is forty thousand dollars that we're getting. The next is a bid approval for twenty-twenty-one road project from city engineer Dan Gerson on Friday, February twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one. Ten-thirty, we opened seal bids for the twenty-twenty-one road program. There were nine submitted bids, with the low bidder being RMH Concrete and Foundations Inc. at eight hundred ninety-six thousand seven sixteen forty-nine, with estimated engineers being one million twenty-three thousand six dollars and seventy-five cents. We have tabulated the bids and provided results attached. We are performing work on the following streets as part of the road program. We have allowed ninety days to complete this work, and I have a completion date of July thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. We will work on the contract to develop a more complete schedule. The list includes Winter Lane from Bid Off to Outlook, Brookport Drive, Summer Lane, north and south of Bid Off, West Seventy-Fourth, south of Memphis, West Seventy-Fourth, north of Memphis. West Seventy-Fourth is an alley that runs parallel to Ridge Road, behind the apartment buildings and homes. And then we also have Ridge Road, as mentioned before, from Memphis south to Flowerdale.
Move to award the lowest and best bid to RMH Concrete and Foundations for eight hundred and ninety-six thousand seven hundred sixteen dollars and forty-nine cents.
Second.
To approve the bid, Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bell Beer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Groddick?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki? Meg?
Meg?
We couldn't hear you, Meg.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we're going into whole business legislation. Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash five. It's on third reading and adoption. Adopting the City of Brooklyn Change Petty Cash Funds and Change Tills Policy. As mentioned in the previous two meetings, this is more or less of a housekeeping issue by Mr. Ragus, our finance director. Any comments or questions?
Move to adopt?
Second.
To adopt, Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bell Beer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Groddick?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Next, we have Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash seven. It's on second reading and administrations requesting suspension and adoption. It's authorizing a community cost-share agreement binding between the Northeast Ohio Regional Surry District and the City of Brooklyn. The amount of this one is five thousand dollars.
Introduce by all suspend the rules?
Second.
To suspend the rules, Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bell Beer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Groddick?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
To adopt, Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bell Beer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Groddick?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Next, we have Ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash seven. It is on third reading and adoption. It is another ordinance from Mr. Berguz. It's regarding Section one thirty-five point oh-five of the Brooklyn Codified Ordinance's Petty Cash Funds.
Move to adopt?
Second.
To adopt, Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bell Beer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Groddick?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Next, we have Ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash eight. It is only on second reading. It's amending Section one thirty-five point oh-three, oh-three. It's amending section 135.03, oh three, adoption of the investment policy of the codified ordinances of the City of Brooklyn. Next we have ordinance 2021 dash second. It is also only on second reading. The ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed 751,000 of notes in anticipation of issuance of bonds to pay the costs of reconstructing, renovating, rehabilitating, and otherwise improving the roof or portions thereof that a city's recreation center has designated and the plans approved or to be approved by council. Next we have ordinance 2021 dash 11. It's second reading also. It is for an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed 1,680,000 of notes anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay costs of extending American Road by constructing, grading, draining paving, constructing stores and making other improvements as designated and the plans approved or to be approved by council and declaring an emergency. The last and old business, it's also only on second reading, is an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed 560,000 of notes in anticipation of issuance of bonds to pay costs reconstructing road, road down alley and road down road and declaring an emergency that pertains to the annual paydown of the original amount. In legislation and new business, we have resolution 2021 dash eight. It is on first reading, administration is requesting suspension and adoption. It's authorizing the mayor of the City of Brooklyn to enter into a contract with the Northern Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association Jailers Unit for a three-year term beginning January 1st, 2021. Mr. Butler, do you want to do any quick summary yet once more?
Um, pardon me, Mr. Uh, Chair. Um, I can do that. What I would just tell you, council members, for those of you who may not have uh, been able to hear my brief remarks at the committee meeting, is that this agreement uh, hews very closely to the uh, collective bargaining agreements that you've ratified thus far. Uh, and um, including the percentage wage increases for the first and second years. Uh, the fact that the uh, union is, uh, has agreed to reopen wage uh, uh, negotiations for year three, um, based on our concerns over the effects of the pandemic on our budget. Um, and uh, uh, additional um, matters that are largely found in the police contract that you have ratified previously. Um, police union, as you know, is represented by the same um, uh, union OPBA as the corrections unit. So happy to answer any questions, but um, I have provided you a summary prior to this and uh, and that should give you a high level overview of the primary changes in this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Introduced by all suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bell Beer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Groddick.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
To adopt, Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bell Beer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Groddick.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Next we have resolution 2021 dash nine. It is on first reading, but administrations also requesting suspension and adoption. It is establishing the full-time position of housing manager within the City of Brooklyn, Ohio. This is a position they'll pay between 40, minimum of 40,000 a year, it'll go up to 55,000 a year. The position will be split with duties between the building department and the economic development department. Uh, is to actually make the person full-time with the departure of, as Mr. Kohlser mentioned, uh, Mr. Marty Bear. Any comments or questions? Introduced by all the suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bell Beer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Groddick.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
To adopt, Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bell Beer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Groddick.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Next we have resolution 2021 dash 10. It is on first reading, but it's also requested for suspension and option. Establishing fees for advertising at the John M. Pauline Recreation Center. And the fees were for uh, ring size, ring size banners, 10 by 12, going from 2,000, 200 to 1,000, um, ranging and for 12 by 24, ranging from 400 to 2,000. Uh, by the pool sizes, three by six would have been 100 to 500. The baseball field sizes, four by eight, 125 to 600. The Zamboni raft, 1,000 to 5,000, center ice, 4,000 to 10,000. Dashboards, 600 to 1,500 and small by ice on logos, 1,000 to 5,000. Any comments or questions?
Introduced by all suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bell Beer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Groddick.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
To adopt, Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bell Beer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Groddick.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
And we have resolution next, resolution 2021 dash 11. It is on first reading and is also requested for suspension and adoption. It is for the rehabilitation of Memphis Avenue at the intersection with Tidham and Road in the City of Brooklyn. And this is where they're actually putting in the actual additional turning lane. The county can, will contribute up to uh, 50% up to $210,000. Any comments or questions?
Introduced by all suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bell Beer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Groddick.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Um, to adopt, Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bell Beer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Groddick.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
And the last ordinance is only on first reading. It's ordinance 2021 dash 13. It's enacting section 135.031, adoption of debt policy of the codified ordinance to the City of Brooklyn. And those are all the argendi items. Does anybody else have any comments, questions for the good?
May be recognized?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Um, just briefly, um, I just wanted to mention, and this is really directed at um, the mayor, Mr. Regus, Mr. Rowan and Mr. Butler. Um, now that the governor last week announced exactly what will trigger us coming out of the state of emergency, which will then um, result in some of the legislation and orders expiring. Um, I talked to a couple of people who work for businesses in the city of Cleveland. And I don't know if this is premature on their part or not, but they are actually moving forward with collecting information, basically just re-verifying exactly where their employees are living because they are kind of laying the groundwork to um, no longer um, send the withholding to Cleveland. And I know that we're hoping for a fix with the state legislature. I know the court cases will probably go on for a while. Um, I don't know if there's anything new on the state um, legislative front. I, I haven't heard anything recently, other than I know that the cities are hoping that something gets included in the budget. But um, I just want to make sure this is on our radar and I don't know, you know, if we've heard anything from any of our businesses. But this is going to be very important to us to try and track, um, you know, how many um, how many employees the businesses are, have working at home, which I think for some of them are quite a few. And also what their plans are for the future. So I, I hope we start having those conversations with, you know, our major employers. So we're prepared. And I don't know if anybody has anything to add, if there's anything new, any new information.
I would say that the only new information uh, came about, came out recently was there's going to be a committee hearing about HB 157, um, which would essentially repeal the governor's order on this. It would be to our disadvantage if that were to go through. Um, there is a group of mayors that are working on meeting with state reps, state senators, in order for them to understand the impacts of the communities. Many of, including, uh, this is very nonpartisan. Many feel like things should remain status quo. Um, and I feel a lot will, will be speaking in that direction, but again, this is very political too. Um, as far as businesses go, if you take an example like Medical Mutual, they have a job creation grant with us. So it's to their advantage in order for us, for them to have the taxes come out of Brooklyn. Um, otherwise they'll go into default of that agreement with us. So, and there are many businesses like that. That's just one of hundreds. Um, there's a separate group of people lobbying to remain status quo for businesses too, because they're dependent on those job creation grant dollars. So I think, you know, it's a little premature, but not. I mean, you're absolutely right. This should be a covered, a point of conversation at every single turn for us. And I feel like it is, at least on the mayor's front, it is. Um, I know Jeremy has reached out to businesses. He could probably send an update, um, a high level update of what the status of that are, is to council in a separate email.
Thank you. I, I would appreciate that. And, and of course, we all know about the job creation grants with um, Medical Mutual. So I'm not really so concerned about them, but um, you know, for example, Key Bank. Um, I know they have quite a few employees working from home, but I'd appreciate an update from Mr. Rowan. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Any comments, questions? If not, motion to adjourn.
Um, second.
To adjourn, Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bell Beer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Groddick.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.